Adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location. Known the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the new coaster on January 3rd, 2020 by email. Of this notice have also been placed at the administration building bulletin board, district schools, municipal building, Asbury Park Police Department, and public city clerk on January 3rd, 2020. In view of the convict 19 public health emergency, the emergency orders and directives at the federal, state, local levels with the open public meetings act NJF 1046. As amended by PL 2020 C 11 OTMA, the Asbury Park Board of Education is conducting this meeting. Originally planned to take place at the Bradley Elementary School. Video and or telephone conferencing technology. The public has been advised of this venue and format change and instructions have been provided in order to assess the meeting and to participate during the public comments sections of the meeting. You will need to then log into the remote meeting platforms in order to attend the remote meeting. PL 2020 S, excuse me, C 11 which permits remote conduct of meetings was signed into law by the governor, by Governor Murphy on Friday, March 20th, 2020 effective immediately. The board recognizes the importance of open transparency and public access and in participation in its work. In view of this current crises in the brave new world in which we live, the board asked all citizens to bear with us as we work to meet the health, safety, welfare, and educational needs of our students, staff, and all members of the Asbury Park community. Our mission statement. Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse evolving global society. Mr. Hastings, roll call please.
Okay, don't forget to take your mutes off when we do roll call or when we do voting. Ms. ETM? Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Carol, turn your mute off.
Carol works on that, Mr. Lattaraca?
Here.
Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Mr. Pinkley?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? I thought it was all Mr. Saunders. Oh, there you go.
His audio is not on, but his mute.
Did you hear me? Because I had problems with my audio.
Okay, I didn't get to you yet, Ms. Breach, but I'll mark you. It's Albert Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Pinkley, mic working?
He has green.
Now he's turned it off.
He's going to click it.
Okay, we got everybody. All right, now we're going to stand for the flag salute, so wherever your flag is in your house, please stand up. At allegiance in the flag, citizens of America, and to your republic. One nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice. Thank you. Now, Madam Superintendent.
Madam President, I'm sorry, Madam President?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, I, before we start, I just wanted to make a motion if that's okay.
About what?
Well, I wanted to make a motion to postpone this budget hearing until May 7th. In order that, that way we can properly discuss this, this budget and make some recommended changes that we haven't had the opportunity to and to take in all the public comments that, that we've been getting lately. If there needs to be a discussion on that, I'd like to do that.
I'll second his motion.
Joe, your motion is to suspend until 7th?
Yeah, according to the statute for Title II schools, that's, that's the latest possible date.
The only issue, if I may, the only issue with that is to the extent that the budget is not passed on the 7th, the budget would then go to the superintendent who would most likely pass the preliminary budget that was submitted in March. But to the extent that the motion is passes, we would really need to make sure that, you know, we're cutting things very close if we're first going to only have a meeting on the 7th. Additionally, we are in time for a notice for that. Should we wish to, should the motion pass, I just remind the board that in order to reschedule a budget hearing, we would have to provide four days notice or advertisement under the statute. So I, you know, to the extent that, you know, if we're pushing it out to the 7th, it's do or die, for lack of a better term, on that evening.
I appreciate that.
I'd also like to add to that, that that's what the purpose of this budget hearing is.
Correct.
Get every opportunity tonight to ask any budget question you want. So my question back would be, why would we have another meeting when we can use this one to answer any questions that you might have concerning the budget? I mean, that's, that's what this budget hearing is advertised for.
Well, I guess my biggest concern with, with the current budget is the, the process followed did not involve any board input because no, no detailed information was provided to the board. And Carol, you're really arguing then, the, the board's approach is to hear a presentation on one night and make determinations. I'm, I'm not of that mind. I, I was really hoping that the board would be engaged since January with preliminary information to go back and forth over the course of a few months and know exactly what kinds of policy decisions were being made that are reflected in the budget. So I'm willing to go later if it's anything that would hopefully bring us together toward a budget. If that's not going to happen by, by going later, my, my concerns have to be, will be addressed moving forward in terms of my expectations about a budget process.
So I have a question for you.
It's a week. We only have a week here.
Yeah, you only have a week.
We only have a week, but here's the thing, if we could squeeze in. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. There's a delay, I'm sorry.
I just want to ask you a question. When we had the tentative budget, did I not take opportunity for each of you to come in and speak with Hastings, the state monitor, as well as the superintendent?
Angela? I asked my questions five times at least. As of right now, I've read everything that's been given to me and I can't answer the basic question, what was done to balance this budget? I don't have that answer.
You have.
One, I would like to say.
A finance, Mr. Lattaraca, so I don't understand what you understand.
Well, well, that, that's what leads to my frustration.
On numerous occasions.
At every finance meeting since January, I've been asking for numbers and was told the numbers weren't available yet. The numbers became available somewhere in late March. So that's, that's my point.
I have a comment when you get an opportunity to hear me.
So, but the question again is, did any of you attend that meeting? I believe Ms. Lizinski attended for a brief moment, and then I believe you called in Mr. Grillo.
When I get, when you have an opportunity to hear me, I'd like to speak, so.
Yeah, I just asked you a question.
Can you repeat your question, please?
I said for the informal meeting, did you not attend?
Yes, I, I attended on March 18th, the day before the tentative budget hearing that was canceled. I, that's the first time I had a look at the budget. I hadn't gotten it prior to that. I did have a couple of questions, some were answered, some were not. But I truly didn't have enough information at that meeting. And the board has not discussed it at all together. We are the only ones that can make changes to that budget. And we have not meet, met as a group with that budget. We had between March 19th, which are tentative budget meeting that was canceled, and today we had 41 days to meet and have, have meetings with the board to hear the public to discuss what changes we may want to make. And Angela, you didn't want to hold a meeting, you wouldn't call a special meeting, you refused to, and challenged three of us to petition, which is a little divisive. So I really want to postpone this for a week, so maybe the finance committee can get together, make some recommendations at our tentative budget hearing, the public hearing next week, Thursday, so that we can make some changes that we can feel comfortable with.
Okay, in regard to the special, just a minute, please. To the special meeting, the protocol, the process according to the policy, and you're the chairperson of policy, that you are to petition and have five members on that petition. So if you had, in achieving that goal, then a special meeting would have been called. I did not refuse, I just asked you to follow the process.
I'd like to know why you wouldn't call a special meeting because you know that more than enough board members would have attended, they, they actually expressed their desire in some emails just to, you know, say they'd like a meeting, and you said you weren't going to.
Because there were only three members to meet a forum.
And see if.
I know that you called other board members and asked them, and they said that they were not interested. They felt there was nothing new to discuss. So that was the reason why a meeting was not called. Had you had a forum, then there would have been a special meeting.
Are there board members that had expressed the desire to have a meeting?
Excuse me? There were three.
My question.
Joe, and I believe Ms. Breach.
My question was after the 19th meeting or the 18th that was canceled, were there board members expressed the desire to meet so they could discuss the budget? They, I understand why it was canceled because of the concern with, you know, the, the virus. But after that meeting, we had ample opportunity to meet, and I'm sure there was enough board members. I'm sure board members here tonight can express whether they wanted to or not.
Well, they cared. That I spoke with those board members, they did not express that. Otherwise, and if you had followed to the policy, which you, again, you're the chairperson of policy, and you would have, would have had that petition, and you would have been able to have five members who were interested, and you would have submitted that to Mr. Hastings, and a meeting would have then been called.
So, can I make a comment, please?
I'd like to say one more thing. Madam President, it shouldn't be up to a board member to call a special meeting. Don't put it on me that you didn't want to call a meeting. Then we had ample time to do so, so we could discuss the budget. The budget is the board's budget. The board has not discussed it in public since January. We had 62 days since our last meeting. That's a lot of time.
So can I make a comment, please?
You are the policy, you're the chairperson of policy. You know the process, you know what's necessary and what is to do, so it is on you because you were the one that wanted a special meeting. Called the board members and asked them, and they did not sign on. So what do you want me to do? I need to stay out of your forum. You failed at that.
Don't put on me, you're the board president, all you had to do was call a meeting. If enough people were going to be there, then we'd have a meeting. If a forum didn't attend, they didn't attend. I think it's important for the board to discuss this budget. And right now, Joe has a motion on the table to postpone till next Thursday because it's that important.
So, hold on, everyone, can anyone hear me? Okay, so I, I just want to make a comment about this. This is an argument about, a discussion about, about process. My, my main thing is this, when we met and discussed this, it was March 18th, right? Correct? I'm looking at this budget right now, and it is severely tone deaf to what is going on on the ground. It doesn't reflect what's going on on the ground. I commend everybody on this board on the hard work that they do. I commend Sancha, I commend Madam President for having to feed our kids and having to wor- worry about the fundamentals of making sure that the kids are going to class and the students are, are turning in their work. There's, I'm making this motion with no disrespect to the administrators and the leadership. But what I see, because you guys are all doing incredible work under unprecedented circumstances, what I see though, is that we need to have a finance committee meeting, two finance committee meetings if we, if, if we can, to really sharpen our pencils and make recommendations to change this budget because as it is right now, I, I, I wouldn't be able to vote for it. And so I know that from the feedback that I've gotten from the public, from the feedback that we've all received via the email comments, we need to really, I'm willing to take off work and do marathon sessions to, to make this work. We need to build a better budget that's reflective of what's going on on the ground. And if that means we have to postpone this until May 7th, then so be it. I have no problem with that. And again, it's no disrespect to anybody who's doing phenomenal work in, in the midst of these crazy times. But I, I'm not ready, and I'm, I'm not going to assume anything of the rest of the board, but I'm sitting here, we're feeding families. I can't in good conscience look at somebody who is picking up dinner meals for free just to offset the cost of their bills, whether they're a homeowner or a renter whose rent is going to go up because property owners are going to parlay that, that tax increase onto them. I can't then sit there and say, oh, by the way, I'm raising your taxes by $2 million. So it just doesn't work for me. And I, I feel like we've got the talent, we've got the know-how, and we can build a better budget that better reflects what is going on on the ground and that isn't as tone deaf as this budget is right now. That's all I have to say.
So what I would like to say to you is this here, we have, our job as board members is to educate children. Right? And it seems to me that many of you that are against the budget, you're more for the taxpayers. And I understand that, we're supposed to be stewards of their money and make sure that we are providing, you know, the bright education. But our priority is to the children, to educate them. And so I understand, because I'm a homeowner as well, and my taxes are also going to increase. And it's a hard bullet to bite, but we are advocating for children. That's why we're supposed to be on the board, to make sure they are educated, to make sure that they have a future, to make sure that they are able to have a job. That's what we should be talking about, program for them and how we're going to take care of them when they do return to school.
Madam President, I totally and 100% agree.
We have a lot of children in our community that are homeless. We have a lot of children that are living with aunts and uncles surfing couches. I haven't heard you say anything about that other than the food.
No, absolutely.
And how they feel. That hasn't been, that's not your concern.
Madam President, again, I 100% agree with you on that. And when, when, when someone, I, I don't think it's a binary choice about whether we're for the taxpayers or whether we're for the students. I'm for both, and again, look, I respect you so much, you know that. My, my main concern is this, is that if we go forward with this budget and taxes increase, all those landlords or all those families that are renters and not homeowners, okay, are living in, are going to get rent increases. And you know what? They may say, you know what? Forget this, I'm moving to another town. It's going to affect our enrollment. It's going to affect in this, it's going to affect things in ways that we haven't even, like, can't even predict. And so that's where, that's where I stand on it. I'm 100% for the students, just like I know you are, Angela. I, I, I'm right there with you. I'm, my thing is, is that I cannot in good conscience in, increase the amount of burden on the residents in this town, whether they're renters, taxpayers, students, not students, families, aunts, uncles, it doesn't matter to me. Everyone's going to get affected by this. And so to try to prevent that, let's do what we're talented at doing and make a better budget. And listen to the appeals of people out there that are commenting and that want to comment, but they can't because this isn't a live, a live, um, public participation. So that, that's where I stand. And again, I'm, I'm saying this with all due respect because I feel like we're all doing this. We're all here, we're all serving to serve the students, to serve the school district, and to serve the residents, whether they're taxpayers, homeowners, or renters.
Joe, may I say, can, can you guys hear me? This is Sheila.
Yes.
Okay, I, I understand both sides. But I just want to, to put emphasis on the fact that this is not something the school district did. This is not something that we can really budget our way out of because you know the bill that was introduced is not school initiated, it's state initiated. This is something that the state decided that the city has to be accountable for. Right? Even if we changed our budget, there's no way to make sure that when we take money out, that it comes out of the city's portion, and we have cut our own budget by, was it $5 billion this year?
Yeah. Sheila, you're absolutely. You're right on target with this. This is a result, the fact that we're cutting it all is a result of the SO bill as we know. And that's not, he's talking about it changing. With the current conditions of the state, as well as other states, I can't imagine it changing. And the only thing that I can say in guidance to the board for a budget is that you have a week. When you say, you know, put our talents together, Joe, I have to say back to you, those talents have been at work. Mr. Hastings and, and Sancha have, have been working on this budget for three months. That said, you have every, certainly right as a board to require and ask for more materials. But I caution you, because I reviewed this budget at least three times. When you say sharpen the pencil, this means jobs. That's the only place left in the budget.
What?
For the budget to be cut. So when talking about being responsive to taxpayers, please remember, all the workers you're talking about are employed here. I mean, let's put it all out on the table. This is, there aren't any other areas of this budget to get the kind of money that you are looking to cut. You can't have it both ways. You know, you can't, on the one hand, I, I know how difficult this is. Minimize it in any way, but you can't sit in the middle of two neighbors and say to one, I'm going to make sure your taxes are cut, and then go next door and say, oh, I cut so-and-so's taxes, but I'm trying to cut your job to do it. This has a snowballing effect. If, if you could go into that budget right now, and I'm going to challenge you, and I have the authority to do that because my authority in this area comes through statute and it pertains to budgetary items like this and issues, then you come back specifically with the line item cuts where you think all this extra money is.
May I respond? I can?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, sure.
I, it, um, I just, what I want to do is, I think that if Dominic and Joe, I don't know who else is on the finance committee, sit down within the week and really sit down and, and look at the budget. As Dominic said, he's been asking for information for months. Board meetings and other, other board members have asked for information. I think if they can sit down and get an understanding of what's going on and whether they keep the tentative budget the way they were applying hearing, or they make some changes and the board feels comfortable with the recommendation, I think that's a better, better way to go. Right now, there's too much of, I don't know. And I'm one of the people that, I don't know.
Well, let me ask you this, Barbara. You understand that the person's responsibility is to come up with the number. So you're not going to have the ability to sit down and dictate to a superintendent what personnel she should recommend cut. That's not the board's job. The board's job is to come up with a budget and, and determine how that budget is going to be cut, whether it's through taxes or it's through the state aid or whatever, to balance that budget. So that's not going to happen because when you come up with that number, even if you make a recommendation of two or three people that you want to see cut, that does not have to be the final decision of the superintendent and the business administrator to go forward. They can reach your number, but in the meantime, reach it by going to other items in the budget, not specifically the person or position you think should go. That's not the board's responsibility.
I understand, Carol. I'm not, I'm not pointing to people or positions. What I'm pointing to is what's going to make an efficient education and how, how we're going to come to a budget that we can agree on and move us forward. Right now, we have no plan. And I think that's part of the reason that they would like to meet and the board wants to meet is to come up with some kind of compromise where we all will be happy going forward and find where we can go in the middle. Yes, the superintendent doesn't have to recommend a darn thing. And of course, the board doesn't have to vote for it, and you can override it. But I'd rather see all of us get together and come up with something that we agree on instead of being in three different corners.
And I, I'd like to add to that, that even in the, in, since the budget was, was released, you know, I've gotten questions from, from the public about them where I, I either can't speak about it because I, I, you know, we can't speak about things like personnel and all that, or I just don't know the answer. So, yeah, I mean, we did sit down back in March 18th, which seems like it was a decade ago now, and how much our world has changed since then. But, you know, I, I have a, a folder full of, of emails and, you know, questions that I, I, I just want to sit down before we vote on this and go through this with the finance committee and, and see if, what we can do. Because there are things that just seem like a different language to me, unfortunately. And maybe that's my problem, but, I mean, that's, that's why I feel like if we don't need to have this in by May, you know, prior to May 7th, let's take the extra week. Let's sit down and go line by line with this and recommend changes. And I'm, and, and let me also say, someone said something about a tax cut. This isn't about tax cuts. I, I think we've, we've passed that, that point. I, I think this is trying to reduce the burden as much as possible regarding the tax in, the, the revenue increase. So I'm a realist, I'm not, you know, I'm not an idealist in, in that aspect. So that's, that's my, my whole intent of this is, so we sit down one more time just to get it completely clear because it's just, there's so many parts of this that are obscure to me. And I'm only speaking to myself. There are people on the board that are much smarter than me that probably get it. And I, I just have things that I have questions on that I would want to recommend changes.
There's a motion on the table.
So, Mr. Hastings.
So Joe, your motion is to cancel the meeting, postpone the meeting, or to table the budget? And the reason I ask is all the other items on the agenda.
If it's okay with everyone else, it, uh, we could proceed with the meeting. I want to make a mo-, my motion is to table the budget and the budget vote until May 7th. So we have ample time to meet one more time as, uh, with, uh, as the, with the finance committee and to see what could be done to make this budget something that's amenable to everyone.
So Jeff, probably seat two, number four and five. Would that, would that cover it?
Yes.
I, I still don't understand, and I have to go on record, saying that's what this meeting was tonight. And I still don't understand if, if you're that concerned, why you're not prepared then to go line item by line item tonight with questions.
Hi, everyone. Also, just, just, I'm sorry, really quick. I, I'm, I'm getting messages from people saying if, if we can identify ourselves when we speak because people can't see the meeting and they're only hearing voices. So I just wanted to throw that out there as well.
So Joe, are you amending or you're applying your motion to table C? Was it four and five?
Correct.
Okay, and Barbara, you're seconding that motion?
Yes, it's correct.
Roll call?
Roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
Okay, Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lizensky?
Yes.
TM?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Carol.
Carol, can you give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Comes up or down, Carol?
She's still muted.
She's muted.
Jeff, can you unmute him or her?
Yeah, I'm checking right now.
Is she frozen? She doesn't look like she's.
No, she's, she's, she's not. She's moved.
She's not frozen.
No, no, but she can't hear.
Can you nod, Carol? Can you hear us?
I see her mouth moving.
I might check her.
Her mouth's moving, but we, she can't, she can't understand what we're saying.
Carol?
Hey, can the moderator unmute her microphone?
Yeah, we're trying. I can't, we can't. Because she has a mute on her end. So I can't unmute.
Okay, so the motion.
Now everyone is muted.
I can't hear Mr. Hastings.
Yeah.
Can't hear you.
He's muted.
Hello?
The yes vote, Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? I don't see Mr. Saunders any longer. This breach?
Yes.
So, there's Anderson.
No.
Motion.
Mr. Hastings, Carol, I have her on the phone. I'm going to ask her to thumbs up or thumb down on the vote.
Yes, she, she did. We did that.
Okay, all right.
So what's the final tally? I'm sorry. I just want to get clarification.
They pass.
So it passes seven to one and unfortunately, we lost Mr. Saunders in the virtual world.
Oh, no. Where'd he go?
So number five, we're not having the.
Right.
And the presentation, no need for that. Can a superintendent know before that, right?
Seven.
Are we going in executive sessions for the personnel items?
For, for what?
We have personnel items on the agenda.
Ms. Lizensky?
We have a couple personnel items on this agenda. Two, two, number six is a litigation and, uh, the rehire list. I didn't know if we're going to exec.
Number six.
You're talking number six on C, uh, C-section?
That's correct. And then we have the rehire list where everybody was raised.
And the, the item you're referring to, number six, is a previously discussed item about two meetings ago that the board instructed the attorney to pursue?
You'd have to refresh my memory.
Say, we can do that in a minute. Right now, we're just, what I got here in front of me, the agenda. Madam Superintendent, do you have a presentation?
Uh, so my presentation entails a review of where we are and where we have been thus far during this pandemic. I'm proud to share that we have served over 3,000 meals, um, in both of our locations that include breakfast, lunch, snack, as well as shelf-stable the fulfill food pantry that we have been wonderfully supported by the director there, Kim Godano. So major thanks to them with regard to that. Um, our operation give and take has been fairly well. Uh, operation give and take represents the packets that have been distributed as well returned. And so in your, uh, handouts, you'll see the numbers of packets. We have in our ground had over 1,100 packets returned to us pre-K to eighth grade. Additional, here that, uh, we are now able to provide online registrations. So we wanted to make sure that in an effort to increase and maintain our student enrollment during these unprecedented times, that our, um, registration is still made available for our families. And so we have gone live and we're online with that. Um, part of Acing, Racing, uh, the district, which is our continuous improvement model, which the R stands for review and reflect. The A stands for assess. The C stands for create and the E stands for execute. During this process, we have gleaned a lot of information. I'm delighted that we have been able to secure LTE-enabled devices that will go out to our students and families. Part of one of the challenges in our remote learning space, particularly for children in poverty, is our ability to close the digital divide. So we become further divided in this space and place when our students don't have the, the technology to access the internet. So one stage, one prong is having technology, i.e. a laptop, a Chromebook, a tablet. The other issue is if they do have it, can they get online? Is there internet connectivity? And there has not been consistently enough. The governor's mandate to school districts, when we moved into the remote learning space, was twofold. There was a two-pronged mandate to us. One was to, to provide continuous instruction. And two was to ensure that our food insecure families have achieved food security or that we are at least attempting to provide meals to our families that they would normally have received during school hours. And so my report reflects the, uh, plan that we submitted in terms of having two feeding centers. We have an emergency school closure plan that we had to be submitted to the Department of Education and it was, and it was approved. And so the data that I just shared with you supports the mandate that we were given. The instruction that we were directed to provide for our students is through the regulation of home instruction. And so our staff has been working diligently to ensure that, um, students are receiving continuous instruction. Our ancillary staff continue to make touchpoints in the home. And as we go through the process of racing, we're always looking for how we can do things better and more efficiently. And so the, um, per, the acquisition of these tablets that are LTE-enabled will help us to provide synchronous as opposed to asynchronous instruction. Synchronous instruction would allow teachers and students to come into a virtual space simultaneously, whereas packets are done independent and without, um, the direct support of a teacher. This past Sunday night, I had a small chewing chat session with our parents so that I could talk to them about our plan, uh, the plan for restructuring the district. Uh, it was attended by a small group of parents. I will have another small group. I will continue to have small group parent meetings. This coming Sunday, I'm delighted to have, um, through this process of racing, a parent meeting that will be exclusively for our Haitian Creole parents because the needs of our subgroups are different. And I want to always make sure that everyone's needs are addressed and that everyone's voices are heard. And what I want to make sure is that enough time is placed on the specific needs for those specific communities. So this Sunday at 6:30 PM, I'll be joined with members from the staff. Madame Dido and Madame, uh, or me, Itien will be joining me and our Haitian Creole families in, um, a, a conversation and a discourse about what's happening with our packets, our remote learning environment, our instruction, and how, uh, our English language learners' needs can be addressed in, uh, in a varied approach. That completes, uh, my report.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Are there any questions?
Yes, Madam President?
Yes.
A question real quick. I'm looking at the, looking at the percentages, um, I see there's still a gap like we have. Do we have any plan of action to help address that, that part of the students that aren't turning them in or are picking them up?
So our, for, yes, so the students that may have not come in through our Director of Student Services and her team, we have been able to provide drop-off packets. We have students that are homeless and/or displaced. And we have our staff that have been reporting daily to drop the packets off.
Any other questions?
I have one that I noticed that the high school's not on there. I know we had a conversation about that, but if you could explain why those, uh, those statistics aren't here about who's participating and who may not be.
I'm sorry, says, what do you mean? Say that part again?
A high school. There's no, uh, statistics about, you know, how many kids are doing their, their lessons and engagement, et cetera.
So one of the challenges, uh, that are, that's faced is when students may have a Chromebook or a lapbook, but they don't have internet connectivity, right? What we've done to make it fair is give them packets. So the packet return is included in the overall count of when I shared, um, the number of packets that have been returned. Some of our high school students have to return their information. Although they might be able to type it up on a Chromebook, they can't deliver it to us in an electronic format. So the packet count is inclusive of the high school students as well.
Any other questions?
Yeah, if I could follow up, that was going to be my question. Can we use some of that CARES money for, in effect, the, the connectivity problem? Are there, are there innovative ways to provide our students with connectivity somehow?
Yeah, so what we've, what we have done is we have purchased LTE-enabled, those are, I'll just say wifi.
Oh, they're enabled in the, in the equipment. I'm sorry. Okay, got it.
Now that we've acquired them, there's a process that we still have to go through and make sure that they have cases and all of that. And then we're going to, you'll see that we also have a reading, uh, tonight for policy, um, regarding the take-home devices. And so that's the next stage of how we're going to close this gap. So asking for is, we can't, in terms of a paper packet, we could just say they turned in a packet, right? That's the extent of what we can give you in terms of the packet submission. Then the next phase would be the packet now has to be disinfected and sanitized and then picked up by the teachers. So there's a window of time here in all of this with the, this, the social distancing and the decrease of site staff on-site that doesn't lend itself for the immediate return of information in that way.
Great, great. I, I'm sorry, I missed that the equipment had, in, in effect, the, the connectivity in there.
Yes, yes.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent. And now we have, uh, the, the data dashboard.
Oh, now I want to read that.
Oh, you do, okay.
So a part of the reason why the dashboard looked different is because obviously, um, I typically report on attendance and discipline. And so those are two areas where we're not, we're not getting metrics at this time.
Um, we'll hear report, no, sorry. State monitors report?
No.
Okay. Okay. So now we have public participation. Okay. In accordance with, uh, board policy 0167.
Okay, so we have the public comment email, uh, that was set up to, uh, give the community an opportunity to submit comments. And we have about 15 or 20, so I'll start from the first submitted to the last submitted. This is from Mr., Ms. Wendy Glassman, 703 Sunset. I oppose the adoption of the school budget at this time. It is likely to impose a significant financial burden on all Asbury Park taxpayers. This budget was prepared well before the COVID-19 pandemic. It has not been reconsidered or revised following the dramatic current and expected future losses in city revenue and losses of income and livelihoods for city residents and taxpayers. It is extravagant in light of the loss in revenue in the city and the financial hardships, job losses and business closures that touch each and every one of us. The Board of Education members need to exercise good judgment and compassion and vote either to delay the vote or simply veto the budgets of the Board. and vote either to delay the vote or simply veto the budgets of the board and draft a new one in consideration of the severe financial strains and limitations we all now face as a city and as individuals. We would all like to see a quality education for the children of Asbury Park. This is a time for the school district to provide a quality education with less and reflect that in the dramatically lower budget for the following year. Both things can be achieved with tough decisions and more effort. If you adopt this budget, know that you will break people and cause some to lose their homes because they will not be able to bear their incremental tax increase. As a city, businesses and individuals cut their expenses dramatically. Why should the school district be free of that pain? I do not think you can justify this budget in this unprecedented time. Ms. Nancy Sabino, 1004th Avenue. As a homeowner and taxpayer, I believe that the vote on the budget should be postponed based on the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic closing and subsequent social distancing guidelines may have on the upcoming school year. The proposed budget was based on a very different expectation and will no longer be applicable to the way teaching will look in the future. This is Ms. Barbara Krzak. Board of Education, we are writing to express our concern over the proposed 2020-2021 school budget. This budget will place a significant financial burden on the taxpayers of Asbury Park. It is an extravagant budget which has not been justified. The quality of an education is not determined solely by the amount available per student. We fully support each child receiving a quality education. However, this can be achieved with a substantially reduced budget. In addition, this budget appears to not have taken into consideration the financial burden the taxpayers will fund as a result of the recent pandemic. We ask that you revise the budget, putting less of a burden on taxpayers of Asbury Park. It is totally unacceptable to increase the amount you request from local taxpayers to fund an incremental proposed $2 million deficit. 2019 was 8.9 million, 2020 is 10.9 million. We ask that you greatly reduce the expenditures and explain what measures have been and will be taken to bridge the $25 million gap. The taxpayers cannot shoulder this much of the deficit. We cannot support this budget or those who have created it, vote for it, or spend it. It is irresponsible. We ask that you postpone the vote and return with a more reasonable budget, which demonstrates that the burden of making up deficit is spread evenly amongst all stakeholders. Thank you for your consideration. Gail Rosewater, Barbara Krzak, 309 Lake. This is Ms. Nina Summerlin. Questions for the board meeting. Number one, what is the plan to appropriate allotted funding for special education students, staff, curriculum, services, transportation, and in-class materials? Two, the 2011 audit documented that the Asbury Park student-to-administrator ratio was more than double the average of the school districts in the state. In 2010, the ratio was one student to 78 administrators. Now, in 2019, the ratio is one student to 77 administrators. Please explain in detail how many administration members and teachers will be cut from this budget. Three, district has people with disabilities. Please tell us, is there a parent advocacy group in the district? Who are the members and when was it established in the district? Four, eighth-grade students being moved to the high school. Please tell our group, is there enough security guards to quarantine our children from the high school students? Please provide how many guards will be used to separate our children? Five, we understand 800,000 is being cut from Title I funds. Why the reduction of funds? Can the board please confirm that these questions are being asked during the meeting and if not, due to the time limitations? If they cannot be answered on April 29th, can we receive answers by email within a week? West Side Citizens United, Asbury Park. Ms. Maria Varga. I am an Asbury Park resident asking that you veto the budget so that the board can draft a new one in consideration of the financial strains and limitations we face as a city and individuals, especially in light of the pandemic. I love Asbury Park and I would like to continue to live here, but if my taxes go up much more, I might be forced to live elsewhere. Again, please veto the budget. Nicole Tossen posted. Dear School Board, the budget you are currently considering was prepared well before the COVID-19 pandemic and has not been reconsidered or raised following the dramatic losses in city revenue and losses of income and livelihoods for city residents and taxpayers. Many of us homeowners may be struggling to even keep our homes, so a rise in school district taxes would be truly untenable. Please exercise good judgment and either vote to veto the budget so city officials can draft a new one that makes more effort to make tough decisions and work within the new reality we are all facing. Thank you for your time and consideration. Fred Elston, 5 Grove Court. Dear School Board members, I received the proposed 2020-2021 school year budget. It is alarming that the proposed budget is an increase of $2 million over last year. This is going to be a huge burden on the taxpayers. We are in challenging financial times that COVID-19 has placed upon us all. People have lost their jobs and are struggling to make ends meet. It is not a time to increase the school budget. In fact, it is a time to roll up your sleeves and dig deep to look for ways in which the budget can be cut. I am sure there is waste, and this is the time to get rid of it. In addition, with the huge reduction in state aid, we must look for ways to get rid of waste and abuse and take drastic measures to reduce the school budget. I am asking that you please vote to delay or veto the proposed budget and draft a new, much lower budget. We need to do more with less. Michael Kushner. These questions and comments are from Michael Kushner and Polly Slidge, 1105th Avenue. If the board votes to increase the budget to cover the state shortfall with a property tax increase, will the funds be used to pay administrators and administrative expenses or to pay teachers and for student programs? If the school board votes with the majority or unanimously to reject the proposed increase to the school district's budget funded by an increase in residents' property taxes, can the state monitor override and veto that decision? If so, why? And if the monitor can veto the decision, why even have the school board vote? In lieu of a budget increase, why is the AP School Board not willing to reduce administrative costs, including salary cuts to the executive staff? Thank you very much for your attention to these questions.
Hi, Jess.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just wanted to see, are we just reading the public comments? Or are we going to be able to answer any of the questions? If not, it's okay. I was just curious.
We're just reading them right now.
Well, okay. Steve Ratty, 919 Madison. To all board members, the world is and will be a different place, and any plans made before this pandemic are no longer valid. Having listened to Governor Murphy's, Governors Murphy, Cuomo, and Newsom, it's clear making plans even one month into the future is haphazard at best. Personally, as a publisher covering the national marketing and advertising business industries, the same is true. Tonight, vote no. Catherine Murphy. Why is this meeting being done now in the middle of a pandemic and in a fashion that does not allow for complete discourse and transparency? Looking at the budgets and the salaries of current administration, I have many questions and an idea, as I am sure other residents do. I was on the board of my children's school for six years. This is a public meeting. Can the public speak? If the public is not allowed to ask questions during the public hearing on the school budget by phone, the public voice is being limited. The meeting should allow any person with questions be allowed to speak after the board addresses the matter. So to counter comments made and then all questions should be answered before issues are closed. If this is not done, this may lead to the meeting being overturned in court. Thank you. Maria Varga. I am an Asbury Park resident asking you veto the budget and draft a new one in consideration of the financial strains and limitations we face as a city and individuals, especially in light of the pandemic. I love Asbury Park and I would like to continue to live here, but if my taxes but if my taxes go up, I might be forced to live elsewhere. Please veto the budget. Paul Weinstein. I have general comments and specific questions on the budget. First, the general comments. I urge you to vote no on the school budget being presented tonight. It is likely to impose a significant financial burden that is too heavy to bear. This is not the time. We are facing a health and a financial crisis. This budget was prepared well before COVID-19 pandemic. It has not been reconsidered or revised following the dramatic losses in city revenue and losses of income and livelihoods for city residents and taxpayers. It is extravagant in light of the loss in revenue in the city and the financial hardships, job losses, and business closures that touch each and every one of us. The Board of Education members need to exercise good judgment and vote either to delay the vote or simply veto the budget so that the board can draft a new one in consideration of the financial strains and limitations we all will face as a city and as individuals. We would all like to see a quality education for the children of Asbury Park. This is a time for the school district to provide the best educational possible with fewer resources and at a lower expense. Ask the county or state for an extension of time to file a well-thought-out budget reflective of the times we are in. As the governments have postponed many tax filing and payment deadlines, a request like this should be well-received as an exercise in good judgment. This is the time to cut expenses, reduce overhead, and get creative to educate our children. This can be achieved with tough decisions and more effort. It is the same thing all businesses and households will face. If you fail to act in fiscally responsible ways towards the taxpayers of the city, you'll be causing tragic results. Both homeowners and tenants will be forced to leave the city because they can't afford what your budget will impose. It will result in fewer students, and the thought will be, why even have a school district? Be responsible, be compassionate, be intelligent. I ask you, does this meeting satisfy the legal requirements for a public session or hearing when the public is not able to speak in its own voice or respond contemporaneously? Will the budget then sustain legal challenge as a taxpayer? That's up to you.
Adam. Could you answer that question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. So with regard to the laws concerning a public meeting of a Board of Education, the requirement is that there be an opportunity for the public to comment. So with regard to this new and brave world that we're in, specifically of virtual meetings, I was asked by the administration what some of the 54 Boards of Education that my firm represents are doing with regard to conducting the public meetings. And in that regard, many of the boards are doing many different things. Some of the boards are having live video with members of the public joining by video. Some of the boards are having video with members of the public joining via telephone. Some of the boards are having, the members of the public who join via video and telephone ask live and contemporaneous questions. Some of the boards are doing what this board is doing. This approach, the approach that the Asbury Park Board of Education has chosen for this meeting is the most conservative approach, probably most appropriate, or I should say, a safe way to go for a first virtual board meeting in that the public is given the opportunity well ahead of time to submit comments up to and including the time at which during the meeting, the public comment period closes. I have had, I've seen instances where there's a public meeting and we've all heard the new term, one of the new terms that's come out lately in addition to social distancing is Zoom bombing. We have had public bodies get Zoom bombed, and for those listening at home, what that is is during the public meeting, if there is an open, live back-and-forth with members of the public, I've seen it where members of the public have either made very, very crude and obscene remarks on the telephone. There are also instances of members of the public holding up pornographic pictures, and that's all fine so long as the board has a system or mechanism in place for someone to be monitoring, actively monitoring, and/or turning off microphones and/or video feeds. It becomes a little bit more complex in that someone needs to essentially cut it off when and if something inappropriate happens. So again, for the first virtual meeting of the board, I think this is the safest way to go. However, board members, should your desire be to change this setup, certainly you're well within your rights to do that. But for the first one, this is probably the safest way to do it.
Thank you.
And this meeting, it's my legal opinion that this meeting complies with the Open Public Meetings Act to the extent that members of the public were invited to listen in and they still, at this moment, public portion is still open. It's now 8:08 PM. Members of the public still have the opportunity to email in their comments, and they will be read and made part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Adam.
What direct input did any of the nine board members have in developing this budget? Or is it true that it was developed and submitted to the board by the administration and the monitor? Has the administration, superintendent, and/or staff proposed or offered to take a reduction in salary or benefits, travel and entertainment, leased cars, etc., in light of the recent crisis similar to what businesses are doing? How much in real dollars was eliminated from the budget or caps placed on these expenses? Where are the cuts to administration for this year and in the plan for next year so badly needed and identified in the audit of the school district? Moving students to other buildings and repurposing buildings comes with a significant expense. What does the district need to be in the real estate business? Pursuit costs are unjustifiably high and out of line, even with other financially struggling municipalities. How much was spent by this district in ransom when the computer system was hacked? And where does this expense appear in the current budget? And is it amortized or reserved somewhere into the new budget? Please tell us whether this is accurate, well, I'm sorry. Please tell us whether it is accurate to say that to date, nothing was changed in the budget as presented tonight in consideration of the COVID-19 pandemic and resulting health and financial crises and the unprecedented loss of jobs, livelihoods, and income of the city and its residents and taxpayers. Thank you for your consideration. Paul Weinstein, 703 Sunset. Tommy Miles. I would like to take this opportunity to publicly appreciate Superintendent Sancho Gray and the members of the Asbury Park Board of Education for your outstanding leadership during these unprecedented global crises. Your ability to quickly adapt and continue to meet the educational and everyday needs of the most vulnerable in our community has not gone unnoticed. Catherine Murphy. Seriously, it just does not make sense. We need to reduce spending showing that we can Seriously, it just does not make sense. We need to reduce spending showing that we can make changes and then hopefully come together as a community to state, to the state and Dr. Repellet that we are an anomaly and need some state support. Many of the same discussions we had about the AH Master Plan. Let's make AP a model of what can be an institute change. Darrell Hammering. My name is Darrell Hammering. I would like to thank the district for providing the families with food in their time of need by being out on the front lines. As a small town, we had two feeding locations. Again, thanks and keep up the great work. Wendy Glassman, 703 Sunset. Are there provisions for raises in salaries for staff or are they frozen? If so, what are they and from what funds will the raises be paid? The school board isn't just a rubber stamp. The board's constituents are both the students and the people that fund education. And yes, jobs will need to be cut the same way every business has to face the same dilemma. The state audit found that the administrative staff was much too high. You both should not be browbeating board members for trying to be responsible. Let the superintendent figure out where to cut jobs, but do that job. This isn't Candyland.
This wasn't what?
Candyland.
What's Candyland?
A game.
Oh, right.
This is from Mr. McNoley. Taxpayers want all the data, statistics and records. Poor transparency. Stop rewarding poor performance schools, dangerous schools. This meeting is disorganized. It doesn't seem to be based on real conditions in Asbury Park. Schools, especially the devastation of city and Asbury Park finances, budget, et cetera. Why not close empty schools, lay off unneeded personnel like prudent municipalities? And that's the last comment.
Okay, that now closes public participation?
Just for the record, public participation is closed at 8:13, so any emails that have been received prior to 8:13 should be included in the record.
I think we have a calendar number thirteen.
So we have the revised 2019, 2020 school calendar. Oh, okay. Number thirteen revised 2019, 2020 school calendar, attachment A13.
Second.
Any questions? All, please.
Can I just say for the public, just to explain what the calendar is revising in the end of school?
Madam Superintendent.
With the governor's mandate of continuous instruction as well as providing food security, we elected to work through the spring break. And as a result of working through spring break, that will cause school to close earlier. The calendar reports the five days that will work during spring break taken at the end of the year.
Any questions? Roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
Ms. Losinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
She's right there. Etienne.
Is there a yes, Jeff?
It appears that she, her mouth is saying yes. Maybe she can unmute herself.
Yes.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Jones, could you give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Mrs. Jones, we can't hear you. Thumbs up or down? Yeah, you wanted to just go to the side.
While we're working on that, Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkley?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders back with us?
Yes, I am with, back with you guys. Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Breach?
She was just there. Ms. Breach?
She said she was having trouble with the connection.
Okay, we lost her. Go back to.
Ms. Jones, can you hear us?
She said yes.
She said yes.
And Ms. Abas Anderson?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie's?
Okay. Madam Superintendent, would you like to go? Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
Yes, I'm requesting a consent agenda for all items on B1 to B4.
Number two.
Number two.
I need a motion, please.
Make a motion.
I need a second.
Second. Second. That's Joe Grillo's second.
I have a couple of questions if.
Just a second. I didn't ask yet. Questions, please?
I have questions.
Okay, Ms. Losinski, could you begin asking your questions, please?
I wanted to ask the reappointment list. I wanted to ask about number 106. That's the Board of Education appointment.
It's your name.
She's asking about the superintendent. What is your question?
It's on the list. It's the board's appointment. I don't know why it's on the reappointment list.
Your question is why is the superintendent's name on the reappointment list? If you have a five-year.
Yeah, I just, I just saw it and I know that we do the appointment or the contract, so I was, you know.
Okay, it was a mistake, so we'll just remove it.
Okay.
You have another question?
Yes, actually I do. On B3, number 12, that's the gadgets that were given to us by T-Mobile. I wanted to ask a question about the Title I SIA and the Title IV transfers. What were they earmarked for prior to the repeat of the hotspots? And dedicating towards a service plan?
Title I and Title IV funds that were transferred out of SIA to pay for the T-Mobile devices. What was the original earmark?
There's two mics open, Ms. Etienne and Mr. Saunders. That's probably causing the feedback.
This is during the pandemic.
Right, so the Title IV funds are for technology devices.
Okay.
So that's an allowable expense. Depending on the school would vary a little bit. In some cases, it was for SEL, additional SEL programs. In some cases, it was for other after-school activities. But in consultation with the county and Ms. Bliznik, who oversees the grants, the ability for districts to transfer those funds and utilize them for hotspots was approved and also encouraged.
No, I understand. I just didn't know what it was earmarked for, so that I just knew what it was supposed to be for. Now we're dedicating it towards the hotspots for two-year service plan. That's all. I just didn't know what it was for prior to that.
Right. Well, in some cases, some of those funds have been earmarked for events, activities, programs that we're not able to, due to social distancing and closure due to health-related incidents, we're not able to provide those services. I shared, excuse me, clear. The goal is, we have to, if we're going to appropriately provide this continuous instruction for a period of time that none of us is still very clear about how long we will be in this space and place, we have to do our due diligence to have these title funds, reappropriate said funds to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our students. And so there's an example of a Saturday program, I come just right off the top of my head, that obviously we're not able to have because we're not in that way. Those funds can just be reappropriated to and have been reappropriated for the purpose of providing this continuous instruction.
I think it's important to know that because that's a good use of the funds then if we can't do what we were supposed to do. What is the plan after two years? Because the service plan is for two years is, what was it, 100 and, I guess, 50-something or 60-some-odd thousand dollars after two years? What is our plan after that? Do we have one or is there any thought to that?
As the plan and guidance from our governor continues to evolve, so will our plan regarding how we will be addressing that. When I just think about technological advances, the way we've done technology six months ago looks very different than how we do it today. And consequently, we will have to be fluid and flexible as we execute the integration of hotspots for our children.
Well, thank you very much for the explanation. I appreciate it.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Hastings?
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Losinski?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkley?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Okay. Mr. Saunders, do we have you?
Yeah, he's there.
He wants to keep it again. Carol?
We heard. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Saunders, can you repeat yourself?
You hear me?
Yes.
Yes, give a thumbs up, Mr. Saunders.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Yes, she's.
Ms. Breach? Yes.
She's above Carol.
No, in here is, she's off here. Yeah, someone's up there.
Ms. Abas Anderson?
Yes. Did you get Grillo?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
All right, all motions carry.
Mr. Hastings? Would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President.
I need a motion, please.
Motion from Joe.
Could I have a motion for all items, C1, number one to C714, we're excluding budgetary items four and five on C2.
Motion from Joe.
Second from Eric.
Question?
I have a question, Angela.
Please ask.
Um, I wanted to ask about C2, number six. I still don't, I don't remember which one that is, the personnel item. But we'll just forget about that right now. On C3, number eight, the demographic study, I thought we had one done recently. Is that not the case?
We had a demographic study done last year. The long-range facility plan and the state have asked for us to push that out another year for the data. So we need to update the plan. Unfortunately, the firm that did the plan for us last year is, is out of business. So we had to move on to somebody else.
Okay, the other question I had was C5, number 13, which is a facility use A and B. They're asking for a waiver of fees. At this point, with our fiscal issues, I am tendency not to vote for any waivers of fees presently. So I was just asking, did they pay before or have they always asked for waived fees?
This is the first time they've made a request. They have worked very diligently with the school district in the past, supporting our athletic programs, our athletes and cheerleaders. And so at this particular time, I believe, because of the pandemic that we are faced with, they have had an impact as well. And so they have worked with the district over the years. And so this is the request that has come for in an effort to, is being presented in an effort to support our community in time of need.
And what's the janitorial fees total, Mr. Hastings?
Looks like. Let me just pull up 13, the attachment. Looks like there are no custodial charges on there because someone is going to be present at the building on another assignment.
The B says there's $4,860.
All right, so letter A is Wednesday for Bible study, so we have staff there. And letter Sundays, so Sunday is not when we have staff there. That's why there's a difference.
Is there a consideration of amending the motion to include the custodial fees for 13B? Or is it, are you just going to keep the motion as waiving all the fees?
The resolutions are as requested from the applicant and the board in the past has offered resolutions, but these are as requested.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I just want to say, so right now, the school's not open on Wednesdays, correct?
Yes, the last sentence, I believe, lifting of the quarantine and the various governors. lifting of the quarantine and the various governors' orders regarding closure. So the thought is, if the board would like to approve these, and the governor lifts the restrictions, that the church can continue with services without waiting for the next board meeting. So it's really contingent upon the governor's actions.
To the extent of the way in here, I think it's maybe better to change the word pending to contingent, just to erase any confusion and/or lack of clarity.
Okay, well noted, so.
Were there any other questions? Okay, then roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes, on items, except for the facilities, two facilities use items.
Those are abstains or no's?
No's.
Mr. Saunders?
He said yes, did you say yes? Okay, he said yes.
Ms. Breach?
She says she's having trouble going in and out.
Yeah.
For connection.
Problem with the connection.
Oh, okay. Yes, we gotta go back to Ms. Jones.
Ms. Jones, can you give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Mrs. Jones? Give a thumbs up or down? We can't hear you, so thumbs up or thumbs down?
Madam President, she may be voting on certain items and perhaps not on others.
We can't hear her.
Would a board member be able to have Ms. Jones on speakerphone, so we could at least hear her through the speakerphone, through the board members' feed?
I could call her up, if you want.
Calling her.
You're calling her right now, okay. Yes.
Okay. I voted yes, but I think this is something that we have to discuss because we can't afford to pay for the majors after they leave. I want the people in the city to think that would be acceptable. They don't want us to raise the budget. We need to arrange some income on those records.
Okay, so are you voting yes or no on the facilities, is that? Okay, thank you.
Jeff, I got Connie on the phone. Can you hear her?
No.
Can you hear me?
Okay, I can hear you now.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Breach.
Is it my vote? Yes, is it my vote? I keep getting bootle off the system. So, we're voting on Mr. Hastings' agenda?
Yes.
Okay, yes on everything, no on thirteen A and B, page C5, and facilities?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All items carried.
There was a question about going into executive session. So. Okay, if you are still, are we still going into executive session?
Angela, disregard my concern, we took care of it.
Okay, great, so then there's no need to go into executive session? No one has any questions, am I correct? Okay, then thank you.
So board members, please disregard the email that was forwarded to you with the link for the executive session, it's going to expire momentarily, anyway.
I need a motion to close?
Move it, that's Joe.
Second, Eric.
Thank you, thank you all very nicely, nice to see you all.